Okay, it's five o'clock. I called to order the Village Board of Oregon for Monday, November 4th.
We just need a minute to pull up that.
To get the screen up.
Oh, all right. Well, I would continue Monday, November 4th, 2024.
Dan will not be anything.
It's okay. He can get in. Sorry, Phil, we're ignoring you.
That's all right. Just like home. Just like home. Item two, roll call, please.
Beshin.
Here.
Higgins.
Here.
Manke.
Here.
Kurt Stroffer.
Here.
McDaniel.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
And Van Kampen.
Here, thank you. Item three, approval of October 21st, 2024, Village Board meetings, if correct, and correction of mistakes, if any. Jason and Tim, we have a motion. Corrections, notes. Okay, we have a motion. Second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Thank you. Item four, public appearances, comments, and communications. Items for discussion and/or possible action. A, amendment to the final resolution number 24-10, authorizing public improvements and levying special assessments against benefit of property for the 2024 South Main Street and Utilities Project. This time I open the public hearing. Are there any additional staff comments?
Nope, nothing to add.
Okay. We'll open members of the public. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board related to the topic at hand. The time limit of three minutes for speaker is set. Council on Public are encouraged to be concise and germane to the topic at hand. Written testimony and lieu of verbal testimony may be provided at Village Board and will be accepted until 12:00 PM day of the hearing. All written testimony will then be forwarded to members of the Village Board, entered as the Board's proceedings, but may not be read at the hearing. Do we have any here for this public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Item 4A2, resolution number 24-32, amendment to the final resolution number 24-10, authorizing public improvements and levying special assessments against benefit of property for 2024 South Main Street Utility Improvements Project. Staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Tom and Amanda, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Item 4B, public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the Village Board, including items for both on and off the agenda. Fifteen minutes will be provided for this item with a three-minute maximum per speaker. Anyone for public comments? Public comments. Seeing none. Item five, approval of vouchers in the amount of $818,245.19. Staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Jason and Amanda, questions, comments on the vouchers?
Tom. I guess I'd just like to follow up on some of the larger dollar items that are on this list with vendor 7303, which I don't have the page number. Yeah, and it's just they're the large expenditures for well number six and well number three. What are the status of those projects?
So, well number three has been bid. We're actually having a pre-construction meeting tomorrow, and that will go into construction likely within the month. Well six is going out to bid next Thursday, and I can speak a little bit to those large dollar amounts that you're seeing. Those include out-of-scope work that was done back up to about five or six months ago that we put through with new task orders for Rooker Melkies. That's why a lot of that was being held by Rooker Melke, and it's just now been charged now that it's been approved recently.
And then the other large dollar items was for the wastewater treatment final design. There was two items for $30,000, one for $96,000. 100019 is the vendor, county, town and country engineering. Again, just because there are larger amounts, does that conclude the design, or are we still going to see additional charges in relationship to design?
We will see some additional charges, but the contract, this particular contract closes out with bidding, and so not too many more because we are at 95% design, and we will be bidding within the next couple of weeks for that. So, we're getting close to the end of that one.
Thank you. Anyone else with a voucher? All right, seeing none, so roll call, please.
Van Kampen.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Beshin.
Yes.
McDaniel.
Yes.
Kurt Stroffer.
Yes.
Manke.
Yes. Thank you. Item six, consent agenda. Staff recommendation, motion to approve is consent agenda items as presented. Motion to approve. Tim and Amanda, comments or questions?
So, I am going to ask Lauren yet again to take the mic and help us understand a bit of item E, which is the 2024-2025 Snow and Ice Control Program. Both Tim and I had this little inkling in our head about something with salts, and we were right. I looked this up in the strategic plan for our Village Board. We have a requirement for employees to engage in a snow and ice control, Saltwise Winter Salt Certification, and I was wondering if you could give us kind of a current state of what that is, and if you think we could accomplish that within some portion of this plan.
Yeah, that's a great question. So, for those that don't know, Saltwise is a program that is put on by a partnership of groups up in Madison. It was originally an MMSD initiative, largely targeted at things like water softeners that they were saying were discharging a lot of chlorides into the water that they were getting at the plant. It did get expanded, particularly out into the world of road salt as groups like Madison and Yahara Winds came on board. And one thing that they have done for the last probably six or seven years is they offer a training each year to different groups of folks that maintain roads, maintain sidewalks, and then maintain private properties. And they teach those groups how to most efficiently use salt and how to plan a program that kind of outlines how your group is going to use salts. Those classes are typically offered in the fall. I just took a look at the list, and it seems like there are a few left yet this year, but none of them are close to our area, unfortunately. And the latest one is, I believe, November 15th. So, it likely is not something that we'll be able to do this year. That said, we will certainly be looking at this for next year. And what will probably come out of this is, like you mentioned, an addendum to the snow and ice control plan that will speak much more closely to how we will be controlling and using our salts, and simply changes to the way that our operators use it. And that will probably come with different technologies on those trucks to kind of make that more efficient. Great, thank you.
Anybody else? Tim?
I was just confused by item C. It seemed like a requirement to have terms in place for contractors used when they build the library that's already built. Did I misunderstand?
Yes, so you are right to be confused. USDA has already made our final grant payment, and the part of the challenge is that this congressionally directed spending that we got this funding through is recent, and so they don't have clear guidelines on the requirements. And so these items were not on the requirement checklist when they initially went through any of the number of checklists that they have. But I met with them, they sent the documents over, and I said, really, do we need to have these signed? We've already done construction. Do they, they don't apply to other future village projects, do they? Because I wanted to make sure we understood what we needed to do in terms of village protocol. They did reassure me that the terms for construction only applied to this project, and so really that assurance agreement really does nothing because we had already completed construction. But they did assure me that this was required to have on file. The one that actually does have more implications is the equal opportunity agreement. There's a few very specific things that they ask for that would apply just to the library and village hall, but not other village operations. But you're right, that it's kind of weird to sign an agreement saying we're going to construct a building a certain way when we've already constructed it, and those terms do not apply to any other projects. Should other village projects or buildings be federally funded, those projects would have their own agreements that they would have to sign hopefully before they start construction. But this is more of them checking a box on a list rather than changing, in that instance, rather than changing anything that we've done or will do.
Well, thanks for the explanation.
Can I ask a follow-up on that?
Please.
And I'm assuming the library meets all these requirements anyway?
Well, so like the assurance one, we did not, I mean, there's specific language they want in contracts and things like that, and we did not do that because we were not aware of it at the time that we went to bed.
But as far as meeting Disability Act requirements and all that.
That's true. They do have specific things. They want you to have a limited English proficiency plan in place. They've provided a sample that we can tweak to have that in place. They want to make sure that you have Google Translate available for residents who come in and wish to use your services and speak a different native language other than English. They have two posters that we're supposed to post on our bulletin board, and they have an I speak poster that allows people to point at the language that they speak as their native language if it's other than English, to help make sure you're providing assistance in the proper language. That's all I'm aware of, but I haven't had a chance to dig into that since our meeting on Tuesday, but it should be things that are easy to implement for us.
What have you been doing, Jennifer?
I don't know.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Okay, anybody else? Just take a moment to, on item A, 6A, the Oregon Fire and EMS District Joint Board, Mark Severson recently resigned. He had served on that for many, many years representing the village, and I want to thank him for his service. And just mention that Corey Horton, a past Village Board member, has agreed to step up and take that seat representing the village. So, appreciate Mark's service, and thank you for Corey for agreeing to join. Amanda, please.
I was just going to say, I may be one of the only people up here who served with Corey, and he was an excellent Village Board member, and I think he's an excellent choice.
Okay, we have a motion. Second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Item seven, reports of committees. No. Item eight, unfinished business. Items for discussion and/or possible action. A, continue 2025 draft budget review.
All right, so I don't have too much to cover from the last meeting. There isn't a whole lot of changes or anything like that. So, but I do have, obviously, here one issue flagged that I want to cover a little bit in detail. But as far as from the last meeting, we did get the public notice, budget summary published in The Observer on 31st. We'll still have the public hearing and possible budget approval for November 18th. There are no changes to the budget from what was presented at the last meeting. We will get that update for the OCA media contribution to the 133 instead of the 129 based on the direction from the Board at the last meeting. But other than that, everything is the same, and we're still on track for the schedule. So, before I get into this fiery EMS thing, any questions on the draft budget elsewise? All right. All right, so back in May-June, we started talking about using this levy limit exception related to joint fire departments and joint EMS districts. So, if you recall, we talked about this in our joint meeting with the town municipalities back in July. And you may remember, I had shared some correspondence that I had with the Department of Revenue regarding how this exception functions and how it works, and received some guidance from DOR on that, and had shared that with all of you, that correspondence and that guidance in that joint meeting, and had referenced it in my presentation. So, a couple of weeks ago, literally start of October, I had reached out to DOR to ask a couple of questions about this exception, some nuances to how it can be used. And in a message I received on October 24th, a couple of weeks ago, I'd gotten a message back from the representative saying that they were incorrect in their guidance that they gave in July to us, and that the actual apparently correct guidance was, created difference of about $173,000 to the negative for the village. So, I had some additional correspondence with this individual, expressing my displeasure, and trying to understand that a little bit more. But then he reiterated a couple of times that he had made a mistake in the guidance that was given and documented, and that what he was conveying now was the correct advice. So, so the last couple of weeks, I've done a couple of things. Number one is, I made our elected representatives at the state level aware of this problem. Number one, just for our specific issue, but just generally related to this exception. So, I let, as you can see here, Representative Jacobson, Senator Spritzer, Senator Mark Line, aware of this, the league aware of this. I contacted every single division administrator, deputy division administrator and supervisor in the DOR LGS Bureau, and of course, I let our town partners know as well. So, as far as I know, this created a little bit of a stir at the DOR, and what they've told me is they're reviewing this internally right now. And I have gotten that confirmation from the state reps, too, that that's what they've been made aware of, and the league as well. And they're supposed to reach out to me this week to address this matter or determine next steps. So, for right now, I guess the advice that I've given the towns and what we're planning on right now is we don't want to cause any disruption by making any changes that may not be necessary. So, we're just waiting for the DOR's advice, and we're stating pat. But if for some reason we get some guidance or definitive guidance that this was not correct, the original advice is not correct, then we will have to scramble to most likely have a joint meeting next week with all of our town partners to adjust the district budget, and then adjust our budget as well accordingly. I think it can be reasonably done, as long as DOR gets back to us here within at least a couple of days. We'll have to pull a meeting of all four of our, including the district, all four of our entities together to try to make that happen. So, so just to clarify a little bit on this particular exception, so we had one version of the guidance that was given in July. This is documented in our email correspondence. So, the difference, the key difference here was the guidance in July was the difference in the portion that will be paid by the property tax levy is what can be used as the levy adjustment, and the revised guidance in October here is just the total change in assessed charges from the district. So, if you remember this exception, so there's a couple of parts to it. So, number one, there is obviously the exception itself, which is described in statute, but it says it's related to the amount that we levy in that year, which can be accepted, but only up to the extent that we would exceed our levy limit. And so, that's what we did our budget based upon, and the district's budget based upon as well. Now, in order to qualify for that, you have to do two things. Your total assessed charges from your district for all municipalities cannot change from year, from the prior year to this year by a difference of a factor of the Consumer Price Index plus 2%. And we met that as we went over, you know, during the summer, during our budgeting meetings with the district. And then, of course, at the last meeting, we just approved this, the second one, which is this resolution that all of our governing bodies have to adopt. So, when you look at the calculation, so this total assessed charge is qualification. So, we, for 2024, these were our total assessed charges compared to 2025 budget. It's a difference of 81,000, 5.197%. We're just under that CPI plus 2% factor of 5.2%. So, we qualified for it, and so we qualify for the exception. Now, the difference in what caused this potentially is when you look at the nuance of how those charges actually occur. So, for the Village of Oregon and the Town of Oregon, we contribute our charges in three different ways. We have contribution of fire dues, which is an aid program. We receive money from the state, which we just are required by law to pass on to the fire district. So, it's effectively just a pass-through. We cover our operating portion of the district through property tax levy, and then we cover the capital portion through debt. And that's also how the Town of Oregon does it as well. But then the Town of Dunn and Town of Rutland, they make their operating and capital contributions all through the property tax levy. So, the difference here is the new guidance is saying that what we have here in sort of reddish-orange is the exception that we can take to our property tax levy this year. So, Village can take 69,940. Town of Oregon, 12,499. The Town of Dunn is actually, has a decrease, so they don't get an exception, but they have $1,700 in savings in their budget. And then Town of Rutland has 825 bucks that they can take as an exception. Now, the difference that happened here was, we were given original guidance that we could take these yellow numbers, which is the difference in the portion that's attributable to the property tax levy. So, we, of course, had 242, 324. Town of Oregon has a difference of 69,38. So, we're both affected here. Ours is a $173,000 difference when you look at the two numbers here, and Town of Oregon about 48,000. So, if we have to make an adjustment, we would have to reduce the operating portion in order to, you know, drive these costs down to the point where they match the exception. So, I know we included a firefighter, new firefighter, paramedic position, and we added more funding for wages for existing staff. Most likely, we would have to revisit that and see what we can, what we can possibly do there. So, as it stands right now, like I said, we're just waiting for the DOR on what's going to happen here. Obviously, the issue here is, we have some pretty significant deadlines with the property tax administration process coming up, our budget approval deadlines. So, the more immediate issue is, we just need to know exactly what the DOR is going to do with this. But long-term, I think there's some implications and some conversation about, this is a 20-year exception in the statute, and why isn't there clear guidance on how this can be done is not exactly clear to me, but hopefully the DOR will figure that out. So, the outcomes here, hopefully, we can continue with the guidance we got in July, and this will just be something we'll forget, and we won't have to make any changes to our budget at all, and we can continue on. If they uphold what they've said here in October, like I said, we'll have to change our budget. It's pretty significantly, the district budget pretty significantly, and we'll have to coordinate that, a joint meeting pretty rapidly. It will have to happen next week, maybe even as early as late this week if possible. And then we'll have to change all those things and get everything ready for the November 18th meeting to make that work. I think that's all I have to say on that. If there's any questions or anything I can answer or explain a little bit more on, I'm happy to do so.
Tim?
I assume you talked to the fire chief about this?
I have not yet. I've informed the towns, and then we'll see how, we'll see what kind of guidance we get back from the DOR here, and talk about what options we have.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Mark. Did you have more on the budget?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you. Item nine, no business, none. Item 10, reports of village officers, department heads and consultants. This is for information only, no action will be taken. A is a village administrator report. Questions or comments for Mark? B is police chief report. Number one, calls for service for August and September 2024.
Yeah, I will go through the calls for service. We highlighted some of the calls we were on for each month. But we are very fortunate. Our community does a first responder event for us, so that was, that happened in August. Thank you to all of you that could make it to the event. Our families love it, look forward to it every year. You'll see at the bottom, I threw in a few pictures. National Night Out was a huge success for us and the fire department. We joined together to host that, and we were able to secure the Blackhawk helicopter coming down. That was just awesome. So, if you don't get a chance, I'm hoping the fire chief can get it again next year. It's just a once-in-a-lifetime experience. What was really cool is the pilot, one of the pilots, I know for sure one, was from the Oregon area. So, his family got to come in and watch the community basically kind of swarm the helicopters that finally were safely landed.
Yes, they did.
Yes. But then the other photograph there, so we do awards at the first responder event. The reason I included this photo was sadly, we lost one of our crossing guards to a very courageous and long battle with cancer. So, we recognized him and awarded his family a special token of just our appreciation for his service. Even as he was in the thick of it with the treatments that he was going through, he still wanted to be out there helping those kids cross safely. So, we just appreciated his dedication. For the next one, I just also wanted to, this was the September one. I'll just highlight what's at the end there. My computer's wonky today. There's a couple photographs. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions about the calls for service, but there's the photographs, one of a young lady. the photographs, one of a young lady talking into a microphone, and another one. This was all a press conference that Safe Communities arranged. If you don't recall, I think it was maybe a couple of years ago now, a young woman, young student was hit by a school bus. Driver wasn't paying attention, the sign was out, and this young woman that's photographed speaking is actually that student that was struck. She was incredibly courageous in getting up there and speaking to, there were four Madison news channels there, all of their equipment set up, and she spoke to how this has impacted her. And instead of harping on drivers, she actually thanked drivers for caring and just encouraged others to be mindful of students walking and getting on buses. The bottom photograph is our crossing guard, which I thought was great. So it wasn't just this young student speaking. Kim Wisden, one of our crossing guards, she's also owner of J.L. Richards, wanted to help support the student. So she actually got up there and spoke to, as far as student safety and just safety in general for our crossing guards as well. So it was just really a great experience to sit back and watch this all happen. I was very proud of both of them. So that was what I had for the monthly activity reports. I have a few other things in there. Do you want me to just go ahead and?
Well, let's see if there's any questions on that item. No, go ahead. And October 26th, drug takeback day report.
Yeah, so I think every other year, we see these big upticks. This was one of those years. We took in 103 pounds of medications. So just a really great way to keep households safe and the environment safe. So glad to partner. Safe Communities gives us a grant for that, which pays for the overtime that's paid out for employees that have to come in for the collection date. But we also thank Oregon Cares for coming to, to help promote locks, to lock up medication and things like that, so.
And let's see. Notice of revisions to department policies regarding the child abuse policy, administrative reporting program, and body worn camera policy.
Yeah, so exciting stuff. We had to make some changes. These are, this is a pile that I have on my desk that I try to pick away at as I can. So the Child Abuse Administrative Reporting Program and Body worn Camera Policies have been updated. I articulated why in the memo. I'm happy to answer any questions. Not real significant changes, more to either strengthen the policy or because Wiley has moved to a sixth edition in accreditation, we're just making sure we meet those standards for policy language.
Questions or comments for the chief? Lisa, I think you looked like you had a question.
I had one other announcement I didn't get into the packet. I was going to email you all, but since you're all here, I'll just share it now. Our planning commission meeting this Thursday at 6:30 PM, hopefully on the same night as a potential joint meeting, but our consultants from redevelopment resources and Studio GWA will be there to share. I know some of you were at our open house last Monday at the senior center for the downtown master plan concepts, but we'll be sharing those same concepts plus a slightly revised and expanded version of the data that was shared last Monday and kind of walking through all of that. So if any of you were interested, I've asked Candy and Joy to post that for potential quorum for the board, too. So I wouldn't have you guys overrun the dais. It's just kind of an FYI for the planning commission and some feedback for them. So if you wanted to come, you're welcome to just in the audience. But we will probably have them come for when we have more of a final, final draft at both planning commission and board potentially in December. But if you wanted to hear that update from them, everything's in the packet, and they'll be there at the meeting on Thursday night.
Please.
So ironically, we have moved the DEI committee meeting to the 21st. So anybody who was going to come to the DEI committee meeting can now go to the plan commission meeting instead.
There's always a meeting, yes.
Including me.
Okay, thank you, Lisa and Chief. Let's see. Announcements, excuse me, village porter report, Tuesday, November 5th, 2024, general election polls open at 7:00 AM till 8:00 PM. Anything else?
That's all I got.
That's it.
Check your polling place before you head to the polls.
There we go.
Do you want to mention when the drop box is closed, just in case?
The drop box closes at 5:00 PM tomorrow. If you're dropping it off after that time, you have to go to your polling place, and it must be there by 8:00 PM.
Dress for the weather, in case the line goes outside.
Sorry?
Dress for the weather, in case the line is long and goes outside.
Oh, yeah, right. Thank you. Okay, announcements, comments, communications, upcoming events, meetings, and miscellaneous business. Village board members may provide brief statements, but no discussion. Anybody? Carleen?
I'd just like to thank everybody who on the board who participated in the community conversation at the library last week, and the staff members and members of other committees who were also part of it. I think we had a good discussion, and the DEI committee learned a lot of things. I said to you and the thank you I sent, that I'd be sending you a survey this week, probably going to be next week, just because I'm kind of busy right now. But yeah, there'll be a follow-up survey to gain your input and to just help us with next steps. So again, much appreciated, those who were able to participate, and we'll keep you informed.
Ben, please.
Normally, we would wait until after tomorrow, but seeing as how it'll be a couple of weeks before we come back together, I thought it was important that we acknowledge and thank the hard work of the clerk's office and village staff just in general. I came in, voted early, and it was easy-peasy, like fast and kind and welcoming and great. So that in and of itself is a feat. I know you've been working really hard on that, and it looks like we're really well-prepared for tomorrow. And so I just think it's really important to acknowledge that this is not just a week of work, this is weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks of work. And we just genuinely appreciate all of the preparation that you've all put in to make this a smooth experience.
It's not just the clerk's department, it's the library staff, the public work staff, it's the police department, they're all.
It's mostly the clerk's department.
I mean, yeah, the clerk's department team has worked very hard over the past couple of months. So we appreciate that, thank you.
Any other announcements? Item 11B, future agenda items. Anyone have something they want to add to a future agenda? No? Okay. Item 12, closed business, closed session business. The village portal convened closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85 sub-1 sub-E to deliberate or negotiating to purchase the public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, specifically to discuss the terms of possible employment transition agreement. Thank you for motion to, let's say, Carleen, and who else said that? Tim? And this will be a roll call vote.
Manke?
Yes.
Dan Campen?
Yes.
Kirk Schorfer?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Feschen?
Yes.
And Higgins?
Yes. Okay, we are in closed session, thank you.